She come down.
I went to spend a week with her. Just me, her, and Mally. The last stuff.
She had whole reserves to ski.
We just want ski powder.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it was, I wrapped, because I wasn't used to the way the snow was out there. It's real deep. Just crashed the whole time, but they were good. You do?
We stayed here with kids and then went to Phoenix with kids.
I'd like to welcome everybody out to this January fourteenth, two thousand sixteen Sholo Unified School District Board meeting, and welcome everybody that's in, that's here in person and those that are watching on TV. At this time, I'm going to call this meeting to order, and Mr. Hall is going to lead us in a pledge allegiance, Mr. Adams going to say our invocation. Please, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our heavenly fathers, we come before thee this evening, we give thee thanks for the opportunity we have tonight as servants and leaders in the Sholo area to work to the betterment of our students, to bring about success in their lives, to help them accomplish the dreams that they have. We pray that the decisions we make will affect each and every child for the good. We ask thy spirit to attend us and do so humbly in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Before I ask for an approval and of the agenda, I'm requesting that the call to the audience be moved one point nine between one point three and one point four due to some of the topics that are being presented on. So with that, entertain a approval of the motion of the agenda.
Go ahead. I make a motion to approve the agenda with the change of call to the audience to one point three one.
Say it.
Have motion in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
There it is. Item one point two, election of board officers for two thousand sixteen school year.
I'd like to nominate Pam Lazardi as president.
I'd like to second it.
Have motion in a second for Pam Lazardi as president. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Now, is there any other, before I turn the, this meeting over to Pam, is there any other elect, we need to get a vice president and a clerk.
I'd like to motion for Stacy Anderson to be vice president.
Second.
There's motion in second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And we need a what else, a clerk?
Clerk.
I'd like to nominate John Larson as clerk.
I'll second that.
Have motion in second for John Larson, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Cool. Pam, being sure, I don't think we need to move, but you can take over.
All right.
Your hand, these are the call to the audience.
All right, so the next item on the agenda is item one point three, conflict of interest statements. Just need to fill those out and...
At this time, you also need to disclose any conflicts of interest you may have with purchasing, by owning any companies or anything else within, and doing purchasing with the district.
I have none that I know of.
I don't.
John, do you have any?
The only one that I disclose every year is that I do mental health services for many people in the community, and it does sometimes conflict with personnel at the district, so...
I think we probably already have record of that.
Yes, but the form has to be filled out every year, so at the, at the end of the meeting, we just fill out the form with that being stated.
Move on to item one point three one, call to the audience. We have three this evening, the first one being Justin Tregasko.
Tregaskis.
Tregaskis, thank you.
Thank you, members of the board, I appreciate you amending the order of meeting this evening so that I could make this comment prior to you discussing and voting. The item that I'd like to comment on is item one point four, set and approval of meeting dates, times, and locations for your two thousand sixteen regular board meetings. I was present at the December board meeting, we had some really good talent that was showcased there. I know that there are corporations that spend millions of dollars to advertise their product, and they don't do it at just the sports arena that they are present in, but they do it on TV, radio, newspaper, whatever media outlets they have. And so I would encourage you, as you are discussing item one point four, that you recognize that, that you recognize that there are people who are not always able to attend the meetings at either this location or the other special locations that meetings have been held at, but they do like to watch them, they do like to watch them either on the internet or on TV four at a later date to see what it is that's being done with the school and with their children. And so I would request that as you move forward with that discussion, that you take that into account, and that you hold all of your regular meetings at this location, where they can be televised, where they can be recorded, where people can watch not only the proceedings, but grandma in Minnesota can get on the internet and watch their grandkids perform the choir songs and the different things that they do. That's my comment, I appreciate the time, thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next call to the audience is Alicia Phillips from the Navajo County Drug Project, the new program coordinator, Alicia, good to see you.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the board, I just wanted to formally introduce myself, we've renamed ourselves, we're called NCDP, we're a drug-free community coalition, and I spend a lot of time in schools, I'm a retired principal from the school down the road, and I landed this job, but I wanted just to introduce myself, just kind of, I left a flyer with all the highlights for two thousand fifteen that we accomplished, and we have an upcoming conference that I left as well. But just so you know, our job is substance abuse prevention, and our focus is our youth in our community, in the two schools in our community, we, we deal with underage drinking, prescription drug, and over-the-counter medication, and the new thing that we're jumping on board is the potential with legalization of recreational marijuana. Your administrative team has been very receptive and allowed me to come into the schools, we've done your safety village, and I'll be, actually be meeting with your team tomorrow to share some other things. We also did the drug kit giveaway back in October as well, and I have to tell you, I had the opportunity to go and watch your kids, kiddos for Team Court, they're amazing, they're brutal too, with their sentencies, sentencing. The other thing that we have coming up as well, we're going to be going into Dr. Dorsett's school and doing a presentation with my, not my kid, and we'll be talking about self-imagining, self-image with sixth through eighth grade, and then we'll be doing a parent presentation the night before on March tenth, and that will be on self-injury, depression, and suicide. We actually did the programs down at Blue Ridge earlier this year, and it was, it was very successful with the, with the student body. But, you know, if you have any questions, if you have any parents that need drug kits ever, all they need to do is call our organization, we'd be happy to come in and present, we have an array of topics, I didn't want to inundate you with materials, but I'll share that with the administrative team, but just thank you for your support and whatever we can do for the school, for the community, just give me a, give me a holler, okay? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next one is Ms. Debbie Potts, Deborah Potts.
Hi, my name is Deborah Pott, good evening, Sholo Board, I am here just to request a due process hearing, so...
She's come to me about this and wanted some legal advice, I'd like to pass this down for everybody to have a copy. How many is going that way? In the very last, this has her request, it also has the board's attorney, Dylan, and then Michael Crutt, an attorney, put his, and suggests on the very last line that we put this as on the, on the board.
I, I don't think that we can comment at this time, we have the request for a due process hearing, and we will take it under advisement, thank you, Deborah.
Thank you.
Let's make up.
All right, next item, one point four, approval of meeting dates, times, and locations for our two thousand sixteen regular board, regular board meetings. I know that we had call to the audience comments from Mr. Tregasko. Tregaskis, I keep saying that wrong, I don't know why, sorry about that. I do want to comment, though, that last year when we had our several meetings out at our schools, we had, I don't want to say four times, probably ten times, the amount of people that we have sitting in this room right now, because when you do go to a school and highlight that school and the children in it, you do bring out a whole lot more participation from our community, and I think that those were positive things. I know that our very first one that we had at Whipple Ranch, we had, I don't know, two hundred people there?
Two hundred, yeah.
It was a very good turnout, and, but I would like to say that, at the very least, I would like us to coordinate maybe with the high school and maybe Jerry Butler's class to get those, if we do decide tonight to have those meetings at our schools on, on those occasions, to still have them recorded, so that they can still be shown on City Four and on the, and on the channel as he had requested. Mr. Adams, do you think that that's possible, that we can do that?
There are times that can happen, there are other times they're committed at other events where they may be filming, like...
Sporting events?
Yeah, that's what they, they're, they have agreements to do that.
Right.
And it's hard, you've got to remember those students, just over Christmas alone in that commitment to those contracts.
Right.
On their Christmas break, we had kids put in over twenty-four hours of dedicated time of filming.
I, I believe that.
You know, I hate, a few I think is okay, but to be, you know, and then we have, I think they can do a few, I, I think we just have to understand, we'll get some, we won't be able to get them all.
Maybe if we limit it to one a quarter, maybe?
Well, I think we, the ones they can, that's what we ought to say, the ones they can get, and, and, and availability, you know, if they can't always be available to, there could be a big test tomorrow, we wouldn't want to have them out doing this tonight.
Right, right, right.
But I think they will work with us as, as they're available, but I think it would be unrealistic, say, we're having here every time we do this.
Right, right, right.
You know, to do that, but I think they'll work with us.
Any other comments from board members?
I sure think it's a good idea, because two things, we get it out to the public, number two, that we get a recording of what's done, and that's, I'm in favor of both of those.
Madam President, on this topic, may I?
Absolutely.
My concern is when we go out to these schools, I believe the numbers that showed up were due to the topics that were on the agenda items, and we've had good numbers here at times too, when the topics were controversial, but I worry about the pressure we put on our principals and the schools when we do those meetings at their school. We already are pushing our administrative team this year to their brink, and I'm worried about pushing them anymore, and so, I don't know, I feel that maybe this year we need to pull it back to keeping it under our control here, so we can kind of control the boundaries of the meetings, but just don't want to wear out our principals.
Principals, what do you have to say, I mean?
It does take preparation, you know, to prepare for a board meeting, and we'll do what you would like us to do, we'll, we'll accommodate.
Well, but I think our, our intentions when we did that last year, when we voted to do that, was to highlight your schools, and to, you know, showcase some of your children.
Can we bring our children here?
Well, of course, always.
I think in the past, we've had some real nice representations here, and, you know, pretty good crowds when those happen, I, I don't know if the crowds come because of the agenda items, but I knew, I do know they come when their kids are...
I was going to say, I think they come for the children.
They come for the kids, when their kids perform, we fill this place up, and when it's just a regular old board meeting night, where we're going through the business of the district.
Right, you bring the kids.
We may not see much, you want to get people here, you want, if you want kids to come to the high school, have the high school perform, and they'll come, if we don't, they won't come to the schools even, so, I, I think it can happen either way. My opinion is, we get more out here to our communities than we do when we meet our school, and I'd like to say, Pam, I'm not, please don't read anything into this school board about Jerry, I, he is also overextended, think about all the hours that they do, they film all the way from football through baseball, softball.
I know they do.
And, like the court, when they had the Supreme Justices come up, they filmed that, and it just, the list goes on and on, and so we said, he came and did the one last December because, so he'd like to try one, but there again, his crew was skeleton's crew that night, and I, I agree, if, if we could have everyone videotaped and have it live, I think that'd be a benefit, but I don't know, I can't promise Jerry Butler's time for that or those students' time for that, so...
So as, as principals, if you picked a month, would you be willing to bring in and showcase your school, or is it just as much, is it less work than us going to your school?
One of the things that concerns me is when we discuss like this, and we don't have microphones to pass down, and the audience cannot hear what's being discussed, that's, that's been prevalent at some of our schools.
Okay, so, so maybe what we'll do is hold the meetings here, but have, have, have months indicated as showcases for your schools.
That would be great, yep.
Kind of a combination of both of what we did, but do it here.
If they, if they can work it into their schedule, we'll have it there, then if can't have it here, I'd be highly in favor of that, yeah, I would want to overwork them, but I do like to have them here.
Yeah. Okay. I think we already have the dates picked, so let's turn to that page, I know that you, I don't know if you all have, I don't know that there's a slide of those, but we already have the dates, it's always, always the second Thursday with the exception of, and thanks to Tanya and Kim for already going ahead and making that exception, every year the law conference, which all of us have to go to by law, falls on the same date as our board meeting, and it's in September, so we always have to change that one, and we end up changing it right before the meeting, and inconvenience everyone, so this year we, we're going ahead and changing that date, so that September meeting will fall the, it will be September, will be moved to September fourteenth, which will make it the...
Wednesday.
Third Wednesday, or third Thursday?
I don't know if it's the, if it's the third Wednesday, but it's the Wednesday after the second Thursday.
There you go, the Wednesday after the second Thursday, so it's the fourteenth of September, but other than that, it's the same as they've always been.
We'll be on the fourteenth as in our...
As, as, as is in Harriet's, already, she already checked when the law conference was and went ahead and moved our, our dates so that we're not in conflict with them. So, looking at the schedule, principals, why don't you go ahead and pick a month that you'd like to be your showcase month, and, and after we get these dates to Jerry Butler, if there's one or two even, that he can do at your school, maybe we'll do that, other than that, we'll try to have you showcase your school here.
Should we give them a month, then, they can come back next month, we'll plan how we get here?
Yeah, or come back next month and tell us which month you want?
Yeah, I'm not prepared tonight to say what.
So can we plan on the February meeting being here?
Yeah, February, February meeting definitely will be here.
Will they all be here, but then the teachers, the schools come pick?
The school showcase will be...
So I will motion that we will hold our meetings on the dates listed here, second Thursday of each month, with the exception of September, when it'll be on the fourteenth, and if those meetings be held here.
So I have a motion?
Second the motion.
I have a, I have a motion and a second, any other conversation? I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to item one point five, a statement of official posting locations, I think we just voted on that, but I guess we have to do that in a separate motion, so the location will be here at the city...
This is where you post the agenda for community meetings.
We just need to announce where they're going to post them.
At the district office, in the website?
The posting of the meetings will be at the district office, where they always are, on the website, is there any other place, Tanya, that you post them?
The official postings that were listed in your backup for the agendas, minutes, are on the website and in the district office.
Do I have a motion for accepting the posting location?
We just need to announce it to the community so that they know where to find the information.
Postings will be at the district office and on the website, as they've been.
I'll get with you to get it on my website, it hasn't been coming through.
I would like to add to that, the robo calls, can we add that somehow? You talked about that in the past, and last year they were kind of hit and miss, is there a way to?
Get on the agenda, that change, and we can bring that back next month.
Okay. I know we're featured tonight in our featured dinners. Item one point six, set and approved date and time to develop board goals for two thousand sixteen. We had set aside a date previously of January the twenty-third, I don't know if that date is still a good date or not.
It's okay with me.
Is it with the administrators? Yeah?
What time?
Nine o'clock.
That's it. I'm thinking back on that meeting we have scheduled already.
Yeah.
I'll motion you do so.
Do we have a low? We don't have a location yet.
It's in, yeah, it's in Heber. I second the motion.
So I have a motion and a second to develop those board goals on January the twenty-third, any further discussion?
We have a place.
Yeah, there's a place.
We have it. Heber.
Yeah, Captain Middle School in Heber.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next one, I don't think we can really do until we have a new superintendent, but we can, I guess we can discuss, item one point seven, set and approve date and time to develop superintendent goals, which we also had scheduled for January the twenty-third, and I guess we can test them on January the twenty-third, and maybe just amend them when we hire our new superintendent?
It's my concern that we have to at least acknowledge the fact that we hold our superintendent to goals, I think right now, the motion should say, and Tanya with this, that we are going to suspend what we're doing right now until we get a new superintendent.
Superintendent, yeah.
But this way it shows that we at least stress the issue, and that we're suspending this until the new superintendent is hired.
Set goals for the superintendent when they come in, what you would like to see done, so they'll see what they're doing when they get here.
When they're coming in, right. So do I have a motion to set those goals at that corresponding meeting on January the twenty-third?
All motion.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item one point eight, set and approve meeting dates for superintendent search presentations by ASBA. Blow a list of dates for ASBA, that ASBA is available to give a presentation on the superintendent search process, this meeting will be on, at an open meeting, so everyone is invited, and can last from two to four hours, the board will need to pick a date, a meeting date, and inform the community. The dates that are available for that presentation are Tuesday, January the twenty-sixth, or February the second, Friday, January the twenty-ninth, or February the fifth, Saturday, January the thirtieth. Personally, I'd like to have it done the sooner the better, so we can get the process rolling, we can get our community committee selected, and I'd like to have as many community members there as possible, so that we can get our community committee selected to work with our superintendent search agency to get the process underway. So I guess I have a motion for which date we would like to move forward.
I'd like to do it Tuesday, January twenty-six also, but my question is for Mr. Adams, is there any big sporting events going on or anything that would be a conflict?
Well, I'd have to have that whole calendar in front of me, and I do not have that, but we could certainly check that with Tanya, and if you wanted to base it on sporting events, I could give her dates when it would be clear by tomorrow.
I mean, I don't mean like just games, but is there any championship playoffs or anything that might be?
The only one that would be close would be the February fifth one, and that maybe could be a regional, there's an academic decathlon competition region event, but I don't think we have any wrestling region events that early, is it that day? So the fifth, yeah, Blue Ridge Home Basketball.
I'm with Stacy, I'm, I'm leaning toward Tuesday, the twenty-sixth of January.
Yeah, I'd like to get it moving.
Would we do this in the evening? Would we do this in the evening?
It would be in the evening.
It would be in the evening.
Of those dates, the only day that I would be available is the 2nd in the evening. I'm already scheduled for work on all those other dates, late till 9:00 PM. And we're out of town. I am out of town one of those dates, two of those dates.
I don't even know what day is the 2nd.
Tanya, these are the dates that ASBA had open, right?
The 2nd seems to work for the high school, too, as far as events go. I'm sure there's a game, some games at night, but it's not playoff.
Okay.
Watch it be snowflake or something.
I'm available anytime, just save when.
Okay. I'll make a motion for February 2nd, that we start the process and listen to ASBA's presentation.
I'll second it.
Is that good with you, Mr. Ocean?
Yeah.
Thumbs up?
It's good for me, yes.
Go ahead.
Rose is after 5:00.
Oh, it'll be in the evening.
I'm off.
Does it work for our administrators? Doesn't work for you?
I'm gonna go to a conference that evening.
You have a what?
I have a conference to go to.
Okay.
I think no matter what day we pick, there's gonna be some conflict. I would like to have the majority of us available. So does February 2nd work for the majority?
Works for me. It works for the high school, I'll say.
Brian?
Do I have to change? Do you wanna change the motion? You said motion, should I change that?
No, motion and a second, you have to move.
I know, but I'm asking for further discussion.
Discussing.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
If we have preference for the 2nd, I'll rescind my 2nd. That's where you wanna go. Didn't the most I wanna go on the 2nd instead of the 5th?
No, the
It's for the 2nd.
The motion is for February the 2nd, I believe.
Okay. All right.
We have a motion and a second for February the 2nd, correct? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Community, there will be an ASBA presentation on the superintendent search process on February the 2nd. We will have to find out if this location is available. If it's not, it will be announced.
And time, do we know?
It will be on the website.
Right.
Time and location will be on the website. But the date is February the 2nd. 1.9 has already been done. Future agenda items.
Oh, I'd like to have robo calls and Peach Jar announcing the school board meetings every month, the day before and the day of.
Are you making that into a motion?
Just adding to the future agenda.
All right, item 2.1, approval of overnight and out-of-state travel. Mr. Adams?
Mr. Schubert, we were gonna run these through you tonight.
Tonight, we're bringing before you four requests for overnight travel. You see them there before you. We are open to any questions. If not, we bring this to you for your approvals tonight.
I'd like to make a motion for approval of all overnight and out-of-state travel as requested and presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second for approval of overnight and out-of-state travel. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 2.2, approval of school calendar for fiscal year 2016-2017. Mr. Adams?
Mr. Schubert.
So in your packet, we have put together the proposed calendar for the 1617 school year. Just as a quick piece of information, it is aligned with the NAVIT calendar. So we bring this before you tonight for your approvals.
I have a question on it, just briefly. The January
2nd.
2nd? Is that gonna be a high absentee day?
It's possible. Arizona revised statute 15-801 says that you cannot have more than 10 consecutive days for a break.
Well, I understand that, but I just
Thank you, Jamie Ramsey.
We even tried to have that called a different holiday. Think maybe we could get away with that and start on Tuesday, and we're informed, no, that would still be part of the consecutive holiday, even if we rename it, so. So we're stuck with the 2nd.
With the way this year falls, is there, was there a reason why you didn't split that full week before Christmas?
Yeah.
Stay in line with NAVIT.
Yeah, this is, this is exactly what the NAVIT calendar is. This way, our students that utilize the NAVIT service will be going to school the exact same time as those services.
But the kids that are going to school at MPC aren't starting as early as we are, or starting as early as we are in January, so it's not exactly aligned, right?
Yeah, the NAVIT calendar doesn't match the MPC calendar.
Okay. And this still has the half-day Fridays?
Yes. My concern is just that we have, I love NAVIT to death, but there might be 100 NAVIT kids, and we have
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thousands of other kids.
If you split the week and go, say, Wednesday of that week, the 21st through to the Wednesday of the first week of January, you're gonna have just as high of people saying fully on those two, Monday and Tuesday, so.
And then that fall and Thursday, Friday.
Well, and the staff has a big complaint. We've done that before, where we split the week before Christmas and come out, on these, on these years when we hit this.
Right.
And the complaint, the biggest complaint we received from our staff is, okay, so Christmas break this year has two weekends in it only, because many of our staff have to work themselves, and they like having the three, you know, their partner or parts of their family, they like having the three weeks of Christmas break, and that has always been a big complaint when we don't.
The weekends, yeah.
So if we did that, if we split the week before, split, you'd only have two weekends in your Christmas break instead of three.
Then I'll make motion to approve the calendar. Whatever the staff wants.
Right. So I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion and a second for the 1617 calendar. Any further discussion? I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Approval of statement of assurance for teacher evaluation system for the 201617 school year. Becky Clark. I know you didn't wanna do that, but sorry.
So, under Arizona revised statute 15-952.a.3, the local governing board every year submits a statement of assurance to the Department of Education, saying that we have a teacher and principal evaluation system in place that is in line with their requirements, which we do, and you have a copy of that in your board book, just so you could look at it. That's the evaluation handbook that goes out to staff. So basically, Cam, I would need the document signed, and then we're gonna upload that to the state on their website, where we keep documents, and then we keep a copy for our files as well. This is something that's done every year, so.
Okay, so I have a motion to accept the teacher evaluation system statement of assurance.
I'll move.
I had one question for you, Becky, and I don't know if you have it with you, but when we're doing the state reporting, do you know last year, like, how many teachers were highly effective, effective, developing, ineffective?
I don't have it with me tonight, but I
Okay.
We report that to the state.
Okay.
I'll second.
So I have a motion and a second to accept the statement of assurance for the teacher evaluation system. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 3.1, approval of terminations, resignations, and retirements. Greg Schubert.
So in your packet, you have a list of all of our resignations that we are, that we currently have in front of us. We bring this to you tonight for your approvals.
I make a motion for approval and terminations and resignations and retirements as listed.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept all resignations as written. Do I have any discussion?
Yeah. I have a question. You wanna tell me why your name's on there?
Just having a
I just think if we accept this, we're losing a great person, so. But I'm not gonna say anything else.
I agree, and I really hate that we're losing this person prior to the end of a school year. Sandy's been an excellent asset to our community and to our school. I have a motion and a second to accept these resignations. Any, any further discussion? All, all in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Approval of new hires and transfers. Greg Schubert.
Listed in your booklet is a listing of all of our new hires and transfers. We're bringing these tonight for your approvals.
I make a motion for approval of new hires and transfers as presented and recommended.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for approval of new hires and transfers. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Approval of stipends, volunteers, and event workers. Greg Schubert.
So in your packet, we've brought before you a list of stipends to hand out, some volunteers that we're looking to bring on, and some event workers. Bring these to you tonight for your approval.
I'll make a motion for approval of stipends, volunteers, and event workers.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve stipends, volunteers, and event workers. I have any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Approval of AZ Merit Early Trauma Stipends. Becky Clark.
So, you can see there, there's some narrative, if you wanna read through it, but basically, in accordance with our district plan for the year, we're offering some paid training for teachers with your approval tonight. So this training will be held next Friday, is a payday Friday, and under your direction, the teachers and staff have been leaving when their duties are completed, when the students are gone on payday Fridays. So we wanna capitalize on that time without asking them to set aside a Saturday or some other time, and provide a four-hour training. At $25 an hour is about $100 stipend for teachers. So our teachers in grades three through 12, three to five classroom teachers, and six to 12 core teachers, will be trained on AZ Merit, which is our statewide assessment. It's relatively new. This is the first year that the junior high and high school students will be taking that exam online. And so we felt like, I have a leadership team, a teacher leadership team that I've been working with, we meet monthly, and we looked at the student achievement data from last year's AZ Merit test results, and felt like it might be a good idea to get the teachers together and help them know how to best prepare the students for the test. So that's what we mean by the ins and outs of AZ Merit. Our elective teachers at the secondary level, and our kindergarten through second-grade teachers, don't administer AZ Merit tests, and so we are providing a training for them that Beth Marsh is going to spearhead, and that has to do with the effects of early trauma on children in terms of their developmental and academic psychological effects and so forth, just to try to help them have a better understanding on how to help those students. So with your approval, we'd like to pay these stipends to the staff.
I make a motion for approval of the AZ Merit training and the early trauma stipends as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve AZ Merit Early Trauma Stipends. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Might as well stay there, Becky, 'cause next is approval of teaching reading effectively stipends. Item 3.5.
So, we have the move-on-when-reading requirement in Arizona, which basically states that a student has to be to a certain level of mastery in terms of their reading ability by the time they finish third grade, or they don't promote. So, we were introduced to Teaching Reading First, this training, at the Title I Mega Conference that a group of us attended earlier this school year. And Teaching Reading First is a training sponsored by ADE. The trainers are certified teachers who have been approved by ADE for this, for facilitation of these workshops. It's 30 hours of seat time for teachers, and they actually receive a binder with materials on how to better teach reading, new teaching strategies for teaching reading and so forth, and then the book, Assessing Reading Multiple Measures. So because of the comprehensive nature of the training, ADE strongly recommends that we space this training out over five days in six-hour sessions, not all in one week, but spread throughout a several-month time period. Also, the workshop presenters are certified teachers out of Flagstaff, and so they're only available on Saturdays. So this training, you have the dates there in front of you, would be held in five, six-hour sessions throughout the spring semester. About six hours a day at $25 an hour is about $150 per session, per teacher. The funding for this, the stipends and the training, comes out of our Move On When Reading grant, which can only be used to pay for K3 reading, instruction, enrichment, intervention, and so forth. So we're asking for stipends for those staff members that attend. There's a little caveat there in the second paragraph about stipends for the administrators who would attend as well, because 30 hours is a lot of time to give up, and five Saturdays on top of, you know, the regular contracted time is quite a sacrifice, so we're asking for that as well. Teachers would work through lunch, and the, the location will be Whipple Ranch, but we're not sure about a time yet. It depends on when the trainers can get here. They're very excited that we're participating, ADE, by the way, and they're actually trying to publicize this training statewide, so for us to get in, kind of, this year on the calendaring is a pretty good deal, because the other training they're offering is on a couple of weekdays, and then in the summertime. So our teachers can still have their summer, but also earn quite a significant stipend through the school year.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? No. I have one comment, and that is, Sandy, you won't be here for the final day of the training. So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 4.1, approval of final viewing and adoption of option choices. The following policies have already been approved. We just had to pick option choices for policy C or J, K, E, expulsion of students. Option A or option B. So, I need a motion...
Make a motion to approve option A.
I second the motion.
I have a motion to accept option A. And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approval of first viewing of district inserts. Policy GCO and policy KDVR.
This is the first viewing, right?
This is the first viewing for these, yes.
We just need to approve it.
Make a motion to approve the first viewing of policy GCO and policy KDVR.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second for first viewing. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Approval of first viewing of a numerous policies, and I'm not going to read them all. Do I have a motion to accept first viewing?
I make a motion for approval of first viewing as policies as listed.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, or any discussion? I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 5.1, approval of revised sole-source procurement vendor list pursuant to R72-1053. Greg Schubert.
Before you, we are bringing to you a revision to our sole-source procurement list. We have a new vendor who is sole-sourced, so we're bringing this to you for your approvals.
I shall move.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second to accept the new sole-source procurement vendor list. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 5.2, approval of blanket removal of former superintendent on all accounts and mailings. Greg Schubert.
That one's kind of self-explanatory. Just bringing this before you for your approvals.
I shall move.
Second the motion.
I have a motion and a second for the blanket approval removal of former superintendent. All in favor?
Aye.
Any... Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Approval of district representatives to receive notice of claims. Greg Schubert.
At this time, we're bringing before you that myself and Kim Seals be approved to accept notice of claims from the district.
And for all of you who haven't met Kim Seals yet, this is Kim, the new secretary for the district office. Welcome, Kim. I need a motion to accept...
Make a motion to approve representatives to receive notice of claims.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approval of district representatives to receive notice of claims. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 5.4, approval of district representatives to request legal services. Greg Schubert.
We're bringing before you tonight those same two individuals to request legal services.
I make a motion for approval of district representatives and to request legal services.
Second.
I have a motion and a second of district representatives to request legal services. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Budget forecasting for fiscal year 201617. Greg Schubert.
I wanted to give you a little bit of discussion on the terminology that they're going to be starting using now for budgeting. We are going to be going to a current-year funding model. There's a lot of... There's more cons than pros to this.
I know.
There is the opportunity there that the tax rate will fluctuate monthly, because it's solely based on your previous month's ADM. Another big drawback in this is, let's just say, I'm in second grade this year. Okay? And I was in first grade in show-off schools last year. I am... We are getting paid currently for my first-grade year. Under the current-year funding, I will be getting... You'll be getting money from me when I hit third grade. We will never get any money from me being in second grade.
Well, then you got here.
And I'm not repeating it. So, I just kind of wanted to give you that as a highlight as to what we are looking forward when we're preparing our budget for next year. Also, I wanted to talk a little bit about Proposition 123. Proposition 123 is the vote that will be done in May that will determine whether the school districts across the state receive the increase in funding. For the next five years, if this passes, the schools throughout the state will receive $50 million. After those five years, everybody will receive, you know, as a lump sum, we're not getting $50 million.
All right.
I just wanted to be clear. So, after those five years, all districts will split $75 million. And after that, that money is gone. There is room in there for an increase to the base support level. It'll go up almost $200 per student. And right now, what we are looking at doing, if Proposition 123 passes, we are looking at using the majority of that funding for pay raises for the upcoming school year. And that would be pay raises for everybody. So, I just kind of wanted to go ahead and give you that update on what we're looking at for budget year 1617. And I'm open to any questions.
I got some of the stuff we'll be talking about at our goal-setting session, I would assume, or no?
I hadn't planned on it.
No? Okay.
Mr. Adams. A question the community might want to know, and a question I have, is will the 40th Day and 100th Day funding have any meaning in the current-year funding?
It'll have zero meaning.
Zero, yeah.
It'll be based solely on the previous month's ADM.
So, it'll have no meaning anymore?
It'll be closer to a charter school model than it would be to what we're getting right now.
And Greg, this...
And like I said, you know, there couldn't... There can be fluctuations in the tax rate every month based on if our ADM jumps 100 points, if our ADM drops 100 points. So, it's all going to be dependent on that previous month's ADM.
This is what I was talking about when I had read that current-year model when we got those policy updates, and I had asked you what it meant by that. I had done, and I was totally confused by, and that was my interpretation as well, and it didn't... It seemed very glim to me.
Yeah, I have a letter here put out by Dr. Chuck Essex. And for those of you who don't know who Dr. Chuck Essex is, Dr. Chuck Essex is the Director of General Affairs for the Arizona Association of School Board Officials. I'd kind of give you a little bit about his background. When the legislature's looking to talk about student funding, they go to him and ask him questions. So, he's very highly respected in this. Just some highlights from a letter that he sent out. "The use of prior-year ADM allowed for this to be calculated as accurately as possible, with the understanding some fluctuation in ADM may occur. However, current-year funding will recreate unpredictability in ADM resulting in cash deficits or significant positive cash balances. In either case, tax rates may fluctuate drastically from one year to the next. Current-year funding causes uncertainty in cash tax rates and will create budget capacity constraints for Arizona school districts." And the other little piece I have here highlighted is my example about being in second grade and not ever getting paid for a second-grade student. But that's coming from the guy that the legislature asks questions to.
It's going to make budgeting a little bit more difficult.
Yeah.
Like it wasn't difficult enough already. Thanks for that information, Greg.
Do you have any idea what kind of increase staff will see with proposition?
I have not dug into those calculations. I'm still trying to get end-of-calendary year work done. But what we're looking at is a two-pronged model, where employees that have been with the district for five years or more would see twice the raise that those that have been here for less than five years would see in order to reward our staff that stuck with us through this time. And then the following year, we would change that number from five years to four years, and that way, we can get everybody included. That's the model that I presented to the administrative team.
Thank you, Mr. Schubert. No action required on that agenda item. Item 6.0, consent agenda.
So, tonight, we're bringing before you for your approvals the ratification of our expense vouchers, the payroll vouchers, the junior high and high school activity revenues and expenditures, ratification of our food service revenues and expenditures, approval of governing board minutes for the regular meeting on December 10, 2015, and approval of the following donations: three NAVI tablets for Linden first grade from Arizona Organizing Committee and college football; donation of a magnetism science lab kit for Linden fourth grade from Apollo Education; and donation of electricity and circuit science lab kit for Linden fourth grade from the Arizona Organizing Committee and college football. We bring these to you tonight for your approvals.
I shall move.
Second the motion.
I have a motion and a second for the consent agenda items. Any further discussion?
I'm just curious, when we receive these donations, as far as expression of appreciation goes, how does that work?
We have been working very diligently on getting thank-you notes sent out to those organizations that do make donations. We do get, from time to time, we will get an anonymous donation, but we do everything that we can to make sure that a thank-you note is sent out.
Thank you. I think that's important.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
You'd like that, Greg? I have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for coming, and thank you, those at home, for watching.